Okay.
There.
Here.
Here?
Here. And just for the record, Batterby and Clark were. I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda on repeat. Two thousand thirteen and present.
Amendment to that to include the approval of the special council meeting minutes of Thursday, July eighteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
And the five point, I guess, or five B? Five A. And then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Bobby, support by Chapman, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, Stan?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes of the July eleventh, two thousand thirteen regular board meeting. Motion by Chapman, support. Support by Fair. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Accept the motion to approve the minutes of the July eighteenth, two thousand thirteen special board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of Thursday, July eighteenth.
Motion by Bobby, support. Support by Chapman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Public comment?
I had two things I wanted to bring up. The email, the ability to email questions into the council. About three weeks ago, I emailed a question in and never received a response or indication that the email was received. That same day, my wife had emailed one in. I did one about the brush pile. She did one about the variance issue, the cost of the variances, but never got any response. She emailed again about, oh, well, five, four or five days ago, again, no response. So I know that was kind of set up to communicate between council and residents back and forth, but it doesn't appear to be working very well, or someone's just not responding. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and see if you could look into it.
Discuss it further under correspondence. We'll discuss exactly that.
Oh, okay. I don't have an agenda. That's the other thing. I went online to look at the agenda and it's not there. At least it wasn't there by eleven o'clock this morning. So I know Rachel's new at her job, so last week, I think it was a little bit earlier of the day of the council meeting, but I didn't see it at all today. It might be there now, I don't know.
No.
But I was going, it's not. So those two things I wanted to bring up to attention.
Okay.
I have a complaint that I just need to verbalize and bring to the board about Scott Barrett and explain the sign that was in my yard. I have been having a problem with my neighbors calling me heroin dealers. And when I went to them and talked to them, they told me to my face that it was Mr. Barrett that was telling them that I was a heroin dealer. I went to Mr. Chapman, asked him to talk to Mr. Barrett. He said he cannot tell Mr. Barrett what to do and what not to do. So I am here to tell you that until it stops with Mr. Barrett harassing me and my family, I have learned the freedom of speech law, my property laws, and I have learned the stay underground laws. And until something is done, the signs will continue in my yard. I just want it to be known. A lot of people have been asking about the signs. It's cleared up. I put them there and they will continue to stay there until Mr. Barrett is off my rear end and my husband's. Simple as that.
Any other public comment? Any more calls? Public comment? Thank you. Police report, Scott's gonna be a little late before he shows up.
He's late here.
Scott here?
There he is. Hopefully, everybody get a chance to look at the police report for July eighteenth. Pretty busy month. It's starting to pick up. At the bottom, the highlight of the month was obviously Fourth of July. It went really well. We were here all day. A lot of help from part-time people and other people in the community, even some reserve people. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Sam, DPW?
Pretty standard month. Couple of just highlights I'd like to point out. I'll go to number nine. It says, if you guys remember right, last water sanitary survey we had from DQ, we had to have a hydraulic analysis study of the water system. Kirby Fraser has been in. Flush the hydrants. That portion of it's done. Now it's all up to them to put on CAD and get us a complete list of fire hydrants, what the flows are at the hydrant. And after I get that, I will supply the new chart to the fire chief. So he knows where that's all at. Number seventeen, or seventeen on the list. Working with Mike from Reason Riley on State Street. Ken, I think in one or two meetings ago, we talked about this, didn't we? To possibly widen State Street out. And the township is kind of, I think, willing to help us. So I've been working with Mike at Reason Riley to possibly widen that out three foot each side of the road to give a bike lane or a walking lane. I was hoping to have their numbers to you, but did not get them. It's not finished. And our safety meeting topic this month was electrical safety. Lockout, tagout, basically. Any questions? Oh, slide. It's been worked. The day, delivery dates of sixteenth of this month. Yep, next week, thanks, Rick.
Oh, very good.
That's when we're hoping to get it. Soon as we get it, we'll get put in.
Any questions for Sam?
Yeah.
Yes.
What did we determine? I know we had talked quite a bit about the valve for the day park, kitchen and restrooms there and all. What did we ever determine on that?
Uh, we're just, we're gonna go ahead and tap that vein, run a new water line into the day park because the old valve's weak and won't side lock. And after we get it just about ready, then we'll go over and dig it up and cut it off and forget about that valve.
Do we, by chance, have a date at all thought up for that?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Mike?
Well, last month was very busy. As a comparison, in June, we had sixty-five rounds down there. In July, it went shot up to a hundred and seventy-three.
We give me a hundred and twelve.
Huh?
We give me a June, Jeff.
June was sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
July's a hundred and seventy-three. And so far, eight days in August, fifty-three. And of course, yesterday, the Wi-Fi was done. We got that back up and running. And I think, I think there should be something done on those nodes down there, so it's much easier to reset those nodes.
We talked about that today.
It was.
Puller ladder, something like that?
Younger people that climb them. But anyway, other than that, pretty much satisfied down there.
Any questions for Lance? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Correspondents? I have some. I'll try to get to it pretty quick here. First one is from Inland Seas Educational Workshop. Let me know that. There are number, there are a limited number of spaces still available for the inaugural Inland Seas Educational Association Shipboard and Onshore Program for Public Policymakers. In keeping with the organization's mission to enhance public understanding and stewardship of the Great Lakes, elected and appointed board and planning commission members serving entities in the Grand Traverse Watership are invited to participate on July thirtieth. So, if anybody's interested, that's July thirtieth. Next one is from the Michigan Municipal League's Annual Meeting. Their annual meeting will be in Detroit, September seventeenth through the twentieth. Their meeting will be held for the following purpose. Election of trustees. We elect six members of the Board of Trustees for seventy-three years to vote on the core legislative principal document. And if the league, if the league board of trustees has presented any resolutions to the membership, they also will be voted on. And to transact such other businesses may properly come before the meeting. If anybody thinks they'd like to go to that, September seventeenth through the twentieth, that's going on. This is a notice from the state of Michigan. Michigan Public Service Commission Notice of Hearing from Consumers Energy Company. Consumers Energy Company requests Michigan Public Service Commission approval to issue a certificate of necessity pursuant to MCL four-six zero point six S and N. It will be held in a public hearing on August nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at nine a.m. at the Constitution Hall at five twenty-five West Allegan in Lansing, Michigan. Any interested person may attend and participate. Another one from the same thing, from Consumers Energy Company. For approval of its renewal energy plan reconciliation for the period beginning January first, two thousand and twelve, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Seems like they're a little behind. That meeting is on August twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, at nine a.m. at the same address in Lansing. Another one's from the Michigan Public Service Commission from DTE Gas. They request the Public Service Commission approval to implement its energy optimization plan. That meeting is August twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, at nine thirty a.m. Same address in Lansing. This is a letter that Joe so freely wrote for us to send to the Bellar Rotary, thanking for their three thousand dollar donation toward our slide. Says, "The Village of Central Lake and the Central Lake Village Council would like to thank the Bellar Rotary for their donation to our playground equipment in the Thurston Day Park. The Central Lake Village Council voted unanimously to match your donation and purchase a new slide for the Thurston Day Park. This new slide will have all the current safety regulations that the old slide lacked. The new slide will bring enjoyment to many children for years to come while also providing parents with a peace of mind that we have all provided a play area with the safety of their children in mind. It's on behalf of Central Lake and all who use the Thurston Day Park. Thank you for your generosity, Central Lake Village Council." Thank you, Joe. These are the emails that Joe was talking about. So tonight, we're gonna figure out, hopefully, how we're gonna get emails answered. The communications committee group doesn't, doesn't seem to be addressing them. So Rachel has graciously agreed to check them daily, and we don't expect her to have the answers to all of them. So if she does, we all need to let her know how we'd like to be notified that there is a question on there that we need to attend to. So at some point, you can just let Rachel know whether you'd like notified by email, phone call, text, whatever, because we can't expect her to answer all the questions for the village council. And I truly don't expect every village council member to open them up every day, but since Rachel has agreed. So that was the problem, Joe. It was just, they weren't being forwarded on and.
Nobody was looking at it.
I apologize for that. So we are gonna correct it.
Okay.
Okay? So where are your questions answered? I know Joe got ahold of you. Do you have any other?
Actually, I didn't get ahold of Mr. Renner. I did see your wife when she was walking in. Answered one of hers, which prompted another question. I haven't gotten back with her yet on that one.
She still, she still doesn't like the whole variance cost. Four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for a variance, which she thinks is absurd for a small village. My question was answered by someone at the recycling center about the burn pile, brush pile.
And most of that cost is used to pay the ZVA board members to meet.
Yeah, Joe explained that to her, I think, about a bank. It goes into a bank of money or something. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, because there is, there is a true cost to meet because the board members are paid to meet, so.
Do they only, what, do they only meet?
They don't have a scheduled.
Oh, they don't have any scheduled meetings?
No, they only meet by request of a resident asking for a variance.
Oh, I thought you had.
Or something to do with it.
Scheduled meetings a year, okay. All right, I understand then.
And I, I think I did, wasn't sure if I misspoke with your, with your wife there or she didn't understand or what, but I think that was where it confused mainly was, is there's no scheduled meeting dates for the ZVA.
And it gets confusing, I know, because the ZVA is the village, the same people that are on the village council, but we can't operate the same meeting at the same time. We've been told, don't even do it at the same night. So we're the same people, who entirely different court.
And that's just to pay, you know, council members or the ZVA board members the same?
Right. Yep. So they get paid to meet. That, that's where that cost goes. And I know this could be like Joe explained, the, the two meetings, Scott and I even talked about that. There, there truly probably never would be the second meeting, would there, Scott? I mean, the decisions are made usually at that meeting. I think, I think that whole intent was, if, if we called the meeting and there wasn't enough information available at that meeting, and we had to call another meeting to gather more information, of course, there's another call. We've had very few ZVA meetings and it hasn't happened yet.
Right, right.
We were pretty hard to even prepare as well.
Okay, I think that answered it.
Okay. And you got your answers for the brush pile?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, we're still looking at options. Just so everybody knows, the DQ has said no, and you're not allowed to burn at the township's transfer station either, so Sam and Stan are looking for options. So that's kind of all of our hands until we find.
Find a place.
A viable place.
Right.
Email from the council did, from Melissa Zellinak. Dear Central Lake Village Council and Planning Commission, In June, I sent a letter of interest regarding filling an open seat on the commission. It's my understanding, according to the village president, that the planning commission will make a recommendation to the council, who will vote on who will fill the longstanding vacancies on the commission at their regular August meeting. I plan on attending the July planning commission meeting, but unfortunately, it was canceled. And equally unfortunate, I will be out of the state when the August meeting is scheduled to be held. At this time, I would again like to express my interest in a seat, even though I can't be at the meeting this week. Thank you very much for your consideration and recommendation to fulfill one of the two vacant seats on the commission. The planning commission hasn't met yet, so. So they do, they're just kind of a limo. The other one of those questions from Brad Glasgow, excuse me, editor of Central Review. Question one is, in the, in the July meeting, I asked the council, there was any schedule for the next steps on the house, and the answer was no. The next morning, a tree removal crew was at the house cutting down the trees. When was this tree removal crew authorized to cut down the trees and who authorized it? Sam, you can help me with that one. I believe it was the day before. We had kind of talked to Ralph on it. Ralph had time to come do it the next morning. And since it was village own property, we decided it needed to be cleaned up as a way to move toward the blighted condition, so it was authorized by me to remove the trees with budgeted money we had. The tree removal crew is from Ralph Heinz, Ralph Heinz's company. In the minutes of the June meeting, the only role involved concerning the property was to authorize the application for the house. Tree approval was not authorized. How much will the tree removal cost? And was this expense, and why was this expense not authorized by the council before proceeding? The cost was one thousand five hundred dollars? Is that correct? And, and we truly don't vote on spending every money that we have budgeted. So usually, you know, when the vote comes, it's when we're going over a line, I think we're a budget debater or something for a large amount of money. We just, we truly, in my opinion, we couldn't vote on every time the village spends money to do something.
Isn't that a rule that you have to have a vote to?
No.
Okay.
We're honest to God, we'd be voting at every meeting because we pay, you know what I mean? It's just, we, we vote to approve the payments of bills, and that just comes as approval of one of the bill payments.
Okay.
The council authorized offering the house to the adjoining two properties first because of past decisions. Has there ever been a property with a house that was first offered to the adjoining properties in the village's history before this? I've, I've been involved with the village for like seven years. I honestly don't know the entire village's history. I know the property's been offered to adjoining property owners, all the property behind you,
Ever been a property with a house on it that has been offered to a?
Not, not that I know. Like I said, I have, certainly haven't been around the village forever, so. Will the cost of the special meeting and the lawyer's fee be added to the cost of the house? Yes. Why was the DPW involved with clearing the trees and will that expense be passed on to the buyer as well? The DPW came in after the trees had been removed and did some with a brush cleaner or else it was more cost effective, and yes, Sam put together the cost of that, and that will be added on. One additional question. The village council declared multiple times in the past two meetings that the village could not sell the property unless the house was first cleared. Why is that now not the case? On what basis did the village council make the original claim? If there was confusion, I apologize. The, the property could not be sold unless we guaranteed the blight removal. That was the public use. The public purpose for buying was removal of blight. The village council decided our way of removing the blight was to remove the house. When that didn't happen, we, with that, we contacted Brian, and as we discussed at the special meeting, we will guarantee the blight removal, by whoever purchased the property will have to do it. Now, they may decide to tear down the house, you know, whoever buy it, but it was the council's decision for our way to remove the blight was to remove the house.
Could I add a couple of quick questions? I'll hopefully be quick, I'm sorry. Does the village council require an ordinance to sell it to private, selected private people in a sale?
Yes.
And from what I've looked at, ordinances have to be for public use. They cannot benefit specific entities. So how is the village going to get around that?
I have a copy of the ordinance prepared by the MML and by Brian Graham for the sale of general all village real property. The ordinance is the time you sell the property.
It has been prepared?
Yeah, Brian will prepare it once we decide to sell it. I was confused too, Brad. I thought it was an ordinance that gave you the right to. You, you, you prepare the ordinance at the time you sell. You sell it by ordinance.
Right. But the ordinance, ordinances, from what I looked at, have, they cannot benefit a specific entity. They have to benefit the whole village. And when your ordinance is gonna say, we're only gonna sell it to adjoining property owners, is that not a specific entity?
Trust the MML and our attorney.
Okay.
What is the status of that house, if I could ask? I mean, is it, people bid on it, the two adjoining owners?
Once we get a purchase agreement from Brian Graham.
Oh, you're still waiting for that?
Then we will offer it to the two adjoining property owners, see if they both agree. I'd just like to address to the, at the last few months meeting, we've, we've been accused of violating Open Meetings Act, Open Meetings Act and conflict of interest. Charlie Coop, while he was still with us, and Brian Graham, both addressed that issue. There have been no violations of the Open Meetings Act and no conflicts of interest existing. So that's been addressed by both of them, so. I hope people don't feel we're doing that because we're not. Well, the other, the other one that concerned me was that the special meeting, if it was, a point was made, our clerk Rachel was asked about what was happening at the council meeting. And I think it's important to remember that the village clerk is not a member of the council. I mean, they're, they're not involved in every council decision or council matter. So the agenda was out, the agenda was on, on our Facebook page, it was on the website, and it's posted on the door. So Rachel truly won't, our clerk always won't know what is happening at the village, at the meetings. I mean, there's not a lot of insight there. But like I said, the agenda was posted, and it was very clear in the agenda that the meeting was to be held for the discussion of the sale of that house.
Why are you looking at me?
Oh, no, I mean, I'm just looking. I'm, I'm just saying, I think that we communicated it well. I don't, so I hope that clears all that up. And then, no other correspondence? Anybody else have? Any? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Streets, Rob?
Well, lights first. We're still working with Shaver Lighting and gonna start switching out the old street lights, the LED, but we've gotta jump through a few hoops first, but hopefully. Ball, maybe? I mean, I know it's right around the corner, that's an optimistic timeframe. Sidewalks, we're gonna talk later on Jacksonism. Sidewalks, Sam is still continuing replacing the sidewalks. How much do we have left?
About four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet.
Questions for Rob?
Thank you, Rob.
Rod, water?
As of last quarter, water meetings, the meter readings are all done. Either you've received your bill or you'll be receiving it. Sam touched on Gordon Fraser, waiting on the analysis from the hydrant test. There's been twenty-eight replaced broken water meters with brand new ones. And the DQ's been, they've had their water inspection, we're waiting on an analysis from that. Another than that, there hasn't been any issues that, I don't know, wherever, I haven't received any, think from anyone.
Any questions for Rob?
Thank you, Rob.
Bill, what?
We had a quite a lot of help from the village's police department for the Fourth of July traffic control at fireworks. Thank Chief Scott, he was perfect for that. As everybody knows, we lost our prosecutor, as I suppose everybody knows. Charlie Coop died unexpectedly. The, the assistant prosecutor, Mark Fit, will be filling in until they, they have to have a special election to replace him. And I'm not sure if they'll hire somebody to, to take Mark's job while he's doing that. And I'm not sure how they're gonna do that, but. That was a loss to the county. He's been a prosecutor in the county for a long time, very knowledgeable. How many years has he been?
He's been here twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years. It's a long time. I think that's all I have for the.
You got it, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Is it here?
Joe, I did?
Pretty much, just a couple of things, basics. We've got our contract for the protect. We talked a little bit about it last month. I guess just ran back to the board, do we wanna go ahead with a hundred and nineteen dollars to do it? If anybody remembers that, it was the, what do they call that? Yeah, the protection right of way for power lines, gas lines, stuff like that. It was a hundred and nineteen dollars, and the council was going to think about it for a month and decided we wanna do it before I signed this and moved forward with it. We never made a vote if we wanted to do it.
I, I would make a motion, we do it, a hundred and nineteen dollars. I've talked to Michigan Municipal League. They said they truly are an active organization that really does a lot of good protecting our region, have been for a lot of years. Like I said, if we, if, if every community chooses not to support it, it will go away. A hundred and nineteen dollars for the year. I would make a motion, Matthew, to support a hundred and nineteen dollars. Motion by Cruzie, support by Fair. All in favor?
Aye.
It's, it's a budgeted amount, so it don't have to be a, we just move those up to.
Okay, with that one done, the next one is, we are looking at wanting to upgrade our assist program for assisting with Rachel also. The assist does our utility billings and our accounting software. And currently, we pay one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five for their support. The upgrade would take us up approximately nine hundred and thirty dollars to go to a gold, which basically, if Rachel makes a call right now, she's put on a waiting list, they call her back at their convenience. This will pretty much guarantee her a callback with, in a very short amount of time, I think ten minutes, fifteen minutes. Pretty much from Becky with USTI regarding our support upgrades. The township uses it, and with her suggestion, it would be an upgrade to you because of all of the programs that we use, but more importantly, the utility billing. I think this would greatly benefit the immediate callback for Rachel on all applications, just her opinion. So that would be another nine hundred and thirty dollars a year for what we already paid, just basically an upgraded service, which I think with Rachel starting on, it would be a very good thing to have, if I could get support on that. It would, it's already budgeted in the office, so we won't have to really take any more there. Yeah?
Motion by oddly, supported by Chapman, to approve upgrading our assist program for support to the gold service, and additional cost of nine hundred and thirty dollars per year. And that's a one-year agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, just so that most everybody knows, and I've seen around town, we brought John Kiso back for a short period, helped cut up the mowing while the guys are getting their water meters and everything corrected there, and so again, that's a budgeted amount, so. From that, that's all I have for the finance and personnel, a little bit. A little bit into the campground, I guess I could go. We've looked at our revenues into the campground, and thus far this year, we're showing about thirty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, revenue so far into the campground. Um, and that was as of yesterday, when we pulled it. So I think we're looking pretty good, and done with what we've expected and done with that, so, um, that's all, for that, that's all I got for now.
Any questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe. He was absent, and President's report, I pretty much covered everything I had during correspondence. I have nothing else. I'd accept a motion to approve the payment of bills, prepaying the amount of five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, payroll in the amount of five thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents, payables in the amount of thirteen thousand forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, for a total approved bills of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Motion by Chapman, supported by Bodley, any discussion? Roll call.
Bob.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Fair.
Yes.
Island.
Yes. Yes. Motion passed. New business, only new business I know is under action items. On action items, first one is approve or disapprove purchase of DPW trucks. Everybody has a estimates in front of them? Quot's, they call them, one's from Ford, one for Chevy, and one from Dodge.
Sam's been kind enough to also provide us with a list of the equipment that's there, uh, an average replacement cost of what is there, um, and how many miles or hours are currently on our, uh, equipment now. With the trucks, I think when looking at these, we've, we've come to a conclusion that on paper, it looks really good, that, uh, for what we can pick up a new vehicle for our DPW, we should be able to private sale these vehicles in three years at nearly no cost to the village. And, um, we would pretty well get out of maintenance costs on our, our vehicles, besides oil changes and whatnot. We wouldn't have tire costs anymore, we wouldn't have these other expensive costs, so, um, looking at them, it, it's a great deal on, on new trucks. A two thousand and fourteen F-two-fifty super cab four-by-four pickup for twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty, that's roughly a forty-two thousand dollar truck, if you were to go to the lot in my, so the municipal sales part, we're doing very well with them. Um, again, we can go ahead and, and sell these out in three years at nearly no cost to the village, or very minimal cost compared to four to seven thousand dollars current cost now to making our vehicles. Um, as you can see, there's, there's an F-two-fifty for supervisor's vehicle, um, there's a one-fifty for a water truck. Um, and that would be in both the Ford and Chevy units there, and, and the Dodgers, as you see, we're looking at two trucks right now, I believe. Um, guys, there's, there's so many options that we can do here, and we could pick each one of them apart and start looking, do we do one? Do we wait? Do we do two? Do we break down and buy three right now? Um, the only thing that I can tell you is with the cost and on paper, we'd almost be crazy not to purchase our vehicles right now. The money is in our equipment fund, um, prior councils and ourselves have had the common sense to build an equipment fund just for these particular reasons, so my recommendation is we definitely purchase a truck, but I would, or two trucks, I should say, and I would question if we want a third or not. The third would give us an option of being able to separate guys a little better, they could go in different directions. Right now, with only having two trucks, Sam's pretty much always got his. With only one other truck, you've got two guys that are riding together to do just about everything, and, uh, this would help move it along, it would just give more vers- versatility to the guys in the DPW.
We need a third truck in the worst way. So I'm a firm believer in keep the one I got right now and get two new ones. And keep that truck as our third truck, sell that water truck that we have right now, because that thing's a, a money pit. I hate to say it that way, but it's just, it's war on.
Looking at that, we, selling the water truck with utility box on it, I would put a rough estimate out of about twenty-five hundred dollars, which is like two thousand and twenty over. And I'd be hoping we got that.
Yeah.
So, but then again, I, I can look at our Ford, the two-fifty Ford that Sam drives now, and like, think we could get eight to ten thousand out of it if we were to sell it right now. I'd take ten thousand towards a new one if we were to go with three new trucks. That's why I say, guys, there's so many options. Uh, we could do it. Or do you keep Sam's and, and use it? If you sell Sam's, then you're gonna, you, you need to get three. Yes, if we keep Sam's, we're at two. Two Sam's and you get two. Then you, you've kept the best of the two. Yep. But knowing you're still gonna put toward a seven thousand a year into that truck to keep it too. Now let's go to the lower side, let's say we only put three thousand into it. It's gonna reduce the load on it with the new two. Right, alright, so, I mean, that's why I said, there's so many options, I mean, we, we can go back and forth all day and argue every which side of it, um, so, I guess if I were to make a recommendation is we go with the two trucks right now, uh, half-ton and three-quarter ton. And my suggestion, by looking at the bids, I would say the Ford, uh, the F-two-fifty, uh, super cab four-by-fours, six-and-a-half foot box, in red for twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. I'd also then say that we should go with a two thousand thirteen Ford F-one-fifty super cab four-by-four pickup with an eight-foot box in red for twenty-three thousand and twenty-four dollars. That's the fourteen's, right? Yep, the, uh-
One's the fourteen, one's the thirteen.
Oh, yeah, one's, yeah, I'm sorry, yep. Alright.
Ken, does he tell you at what, at what point would they have the half-ton available in two thousand and fourteen?
Uh, no, no.
That would be my question. When we look at- We'd see if it come out in another month for two thousand and fourteen, or a thousand dollars more.
I can tell you the two thousand thirteen right now is eight to ten weeks away to get a bill. So they're still building two thousand thirteen F-one-fifties. The three-quarter ton is ten to twelve weeks away. So they're starting production on the three-quarter tons already.
Yeah, and that would be my only question to, like, signature board is at what point would the, the fourteen half-ton be available?
Well, unfortunately, we have, have our order cutoff dates August twenty-third, or the two thousand and thirteen.
So I'm thinking that-
September thirtieth.
That's what I'm saying. That's not really- Oh, right, September thirtieth for this two thousand and fourteen, correct? Yep. And just, I guess, and that's why we up here see the, let's, with the, for Chevy and the three-quarter ton, um, the, uh, bid amount was twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-six, the half-ton was twenty-four thousand nineteen dollars, uh, for the Chevy.
No, they were both-
And they were both two thousand and thirteen-year models, they, uh, the model years, they don't, they're not doing a fourteen model year. And for the Dodge, the three-quarter ton was twenty-seven thousand three hundred and four, and the half-ton fifteen hundred was twenty-three thousand seven thirty-two. So the Ford seems to be the cheapest one, um, going off of them. And- We're all pretty close, have Sammy, do you got any preference?
Uh, truthfully, Ford, no, the more I thought about it, I thought about the Chevrolet, but I found out the Chevrolet, one pickup is a lot truck that they have, it's already made for state bid, and it would be the half-ton, it'd only be a six-and-a-half foot box, we need a eight-foot box on that truck, and it would be white in color. Where these Fords are, the half-ton would be red in color and ordered. So at that point, and I'm very happy with the Ford that I got from them last time, it's been a very good work truck for us.
Anybody wanting to see the spec sheet on them, also same as-
And all the trucks were bid to the same specs, the same seats, same rear ends, close to your bed, air crew still ordered.
Yep, we looked at the options that-
Power locks, power windows.
Pretty much kept us, uh, gave us a good resale value in three years with the baddest time. Didn't want a bare-bone truck that nobody wants, and three years when we go to selling, but we also didn't want to over-purchase, um, that we won't, wouldn't get money back on either, so kinda went with just what most people-
Alright, alright, you know, Ken, to answer your question, I assume the two thousand fourteen Fords aren't out for bid yet, on the half-ton pickups. It don't make sense, but gosh, you'd give it to us if it were.
Yeah, and maybe we'd probably do a roll call and ask, I mean, I date you all sudden, see where next month they come out.
And what's the cutoff date on them?
Twenty-third, so, twenty and a half, or the thirteenth.
Oh, this-
This month.
Obviously, if we were to make a motion to-
Still tells me they're hanging.
To purchase these with the option of going to the thirteen, which I can't believe is gonna be, or the two thousand and fourteen model for one-fifty, I can't believe would be really much more cost.
Half the same, it's not much more, you're, you're getting, you're getting to resell.
So when we do- I guess we just make our motion to purchase a half-ton.
Three-four, fifty-thousand.
Two thousand and four, fifty-thousand dollars.
So.
And then they give us ten times, see what-
Yeah, we'd always, we're always, we're very nice, we're willing to talk to them. That's super guy.
What motion is that?
Yeah. What should, authorize the purchase of two new trucks for the village DPW, uh, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, the particulars to be decided after whether we can get the fourteen at the same price, within that budget.
I'd support that. Motion by Chapman, approved by Bodley, purchase two new Fords, a three-quarter ton and a half-ton, one pickup for the DPW, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Any more discussion? Rachel, roll call, please.
Bob.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Fair.
Yes.
Cruzie.
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, you have roof repair for the DPW garage, you should have three bids on stripping and reshing of that roof, which truly needs done, if anybody's taken a look at it, probably needed on last year, to be honest, but, yeah. Three beds, all licensed, all insured, all local, all local, all very comfortable, shingles, warranties. My only recommendation would be on the one bid, uh, Brian, to absorb the additional cost of a hundred and seventy-one dollars to replace the drip edge. It seems a shame to put, shingles that are probably gonna last us forty years up there on drip edge, you'd see in five years it's steel drip edge and starts rusting off, because we saved a hundred and seventy-one dollars. Very good, these strips, put nice and water shoe on them.
That's a one, that's a one big deal. Brian, between a gray nation water shoe and raised waters, not.
Gray nation water.
Right. Install ice and water shoes.
Not good, won't be raised, but that's a grand deal.
But Ray Hall's also probably included the drip edge, but-
Brian's still, I just added the drip edge on, it's, it's still the cheapest of the two. I mean, they're, they're real close, but. It's Brian's up to fourteen eight fifty-five, fourteen nine fifty, and fifteen three fifty-five. Can I ask, how come you didn't, uh, go with a metal roof on a municipal building?
With the way the doors are, with Sam and I discussing a little bit, with where the doors are, the fact that it is a public building, people in and out, there's no stops, there's nothing, without snow, it comes off a metal roof, I think you have one if it comes off in a hurry.
Yeah, you can buy those holdbacks, you know.
Yeah, we can do some things like that, um, that, all their doors are right on, uh-
So safety.
If they're safety, the cleanup of it, um, and-
What does that mean, though?
There would be more expensive than that old roof.
So you, unless you buy, isn't faster, you buy exposed fasteners, you will not, you will not get a forty.
Well, and then the other problem is with the steel roof. In our door situation, I mean, the one door, we only got three inches of clearance to get the loader off. So if the roof unloaded at night and you trade back loader off, it's not gonna go out without tearing the door down. So that's why we run back to the steel roof.
I'd make a motion that we accept, Drew Camiller Roofing, uh, Brian Drew Camiller's bid at fourteen thousand-
Eight-five-five.
Thousand eight fifty-five. Why don't I just say not exceed fifteen thousand?
It won't change, it won't change, okay. Okay, so that's it.
It's a bill.
The only, the only reason I could think of, they changed it, they pulled it off, and there's some bad roof, but that's gonna be an action, anybody bid anyway, and you got replaced.
They bought, they bought it, and everybody, yeah.
And, and unfortunately, that's something we have to do when it gets to that point.
If it gets to that point, you'll also, you get there, so. Motion by Bodley, supported by Chapman, to approve Drew Camiller Roofing, and reshingle the DPW garage for the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, with the understanding that if there's any rot on the roof, there will be additional costs. Any more discussion?
Bob.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Fair.
Yes.
Island.
Yes. Thank you. Can you cut it back, Lee?
I'll call it. Thank you, Sam. And we talked last month, we recommended increasing Rachel's hours for time in the office to truly take care of everything we've taken care of, and we've written up a contract for the, the contract, did we have a copy of it?
Business, Ken. Just, if you're doing it. It's, I can tell you, it is the same contract that designed for Pat Marshall, as far as that goes. What changed was, she would now be salaried thirty-four hours per week, her employment benefits would be holiday day at fourteen fifteen for actual hours, scheduled to work on the holiday, no other benefits, no health, no dental, nothing, but she would be included in the nurse retirement program. And her compensation would be twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Paid for meeting time, as we did Pat, too, paid for meeting would be at fourteen fifteen per hour, yeah, and that's-
That's what we figured out in the budget.
That's true, everything was paid well within what we budgeted for this year, we would take the deputy for packaging, we come up to that, with benefits and everything, with fight expenses and nerves and everything, we truly have budgeted a thousand dollars. So it can be absorbed by, what we save on the benefits that we will pay in the past, and what we have budgeted for deputy clerk. Anybody that didn't see it?
No, it's the same as the contract.
It is the same one, it has to just change the benefit portion. Motion by Chapman, support by Fair to approve the new employment agreement with Rachel Mulger as the village clerk of treasure. Please.
Bob.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Fair.
Yes.
Cruzie.
Yes. Now we'll read your job description.
Yeah.
We already have one, yes. The next one, you'll see a proposal from Rick Riley, and then we should have some pictures of, of the sidewalk, that is the house at two four four one Chester Street, which is the, which is the house just north of the congregation, which- That is the house at 2441 Chestnut Street, which is the, which is the house just north of the congregation church. The sidewalk truly just goes in front of that house. It's a culvert just to the north of that, and the sidewalk doesn't connect to the street. And just to the south is the paid church parking. It's in very poor repair. What we would like to do, and there's probably gonna be some issues with these people, but Sam and Scott will graciously deal with that for us, is to remove that sidewalk and replace it with fill and reseal. And grade it, grade it back up to the grade if they're for lunch and back up.
To the black.
To, to, yes, back to the black top and it will...
Black top to the...
We wanted to make sure for that council approval because it probably goes...
It has become an issue already.
Already very bad, and Sam was even looking at it.
So, I guess, one, the sidewalk, looking at it, we've removed so much sidewalk in the, in the rest of the village. And you can see obviously by the picture that the sidewalk has to come out. There's, we can't have that. We've taken out better sidewalk in other areas, so that's gotta go. I guess my only question B is, why not just bring out dirt like we have in relative because of the drainage problem that is currently there that we can see in this picture here?
The problem falls in, there's generalists, and that.
Oh, you might not feel over it?
No, why not pull the sidewalk?
That's what we're talking about doing.
Oh.
That's the...
That, that was, that is what it would have costed to eliminate the whole puddle problem there. Puddle back there. So, Rich Riley looked at that, was, that cost was...
Because that was my next question, is this says without guaranteed drainage.
Right, right.
So, we're truly not even asking for that, which is...
I took, I took an extra step by getting you that Rich Riley bid, but...
I understand.
It's a safety issue.
Yeah, it's gotta come out, so that's, I'm not concerned with the sidewalk at all. I guess I misunderstood. I thought we were wanting to do the asphalt.
No, this is, this is what we decided was not a viable option.
Okay.
I was hoping that would come back like three or four thousand dollars from Rich Riley, and they could solve the whole issue. I was gonna say, go for it. Would it come back that high? No. That's why, and then, like I said, just getting with Mike at Rich and Riley, I think we caught heck from the property owners about removing the sidewalk. And we haven't even think about it, well.
Well, I guess, I, we've got an option there, as we all know, by, and we weren't, if they want a sidewalk there, we can replace the sidewalk and charge them for it. If that's what they, if they want the sidewalk, put it back in and charge them. I mean, that, why not make that their, why not leave that up to them?
That's what, to you guys.
They can choose. If they want a sidewalk, they pay for it. They don't, they get the dirt mols like everybody else does. We'll definitely, we'll definitely talk to them, and we don't, it will be discussion. Just because of the fact that he does have the ramp and all that, yes, is...
I just have a question on that, what you just said. The rest of us didn't have that choice. So, you've already set precedence that we didn't have a choice, so why would you do that there? I, I just have a question.
Try to make it a more peaceful solution to the problem.
But, but, actually, I can tell you, you do have that choice.
No, I didn't have.
At the, at the current time, you're right, you didn't. We removed it to eliminate ourselves or to remove ourselves from liability. But if you want a sidewalk, we certainly can go back in and do that same for you.
I talked to Sam about that, and he said eventually they probably would be budgeted for it all to be replaced.
Okay. But I mean, that is an option we have that's available to us.
At the homeowner's expense.
At the homeowner's expense.
Right now, we do it because of, there is no budget, there is no, people replacing sidewalks. So, we just know this is gonna become...
And the reason I wanted to brought to you guys, because I know it's gonna become an issue, and Scott's aware of it, so we're gonna work together to go in, get it done, get away from it. And hope, but I wanted you guys to be aware of it because we know it's gonna be an issue. So, I asked Ken to bring it to you, to bring it up.
So, are we looking for...
That's just...
Okay.
You guys are aware of it, that's all we wanted.
Okay.
You're just protecting us.
And the other picture you have is, just so the council's aware, it's in the budget, Sam's gonna do, we just wanted to make sure you're aware. The sidewalk that goes in front of physical therapy is going to be replaced. At the village's expense, within the budget, we will replace it. And Sam will work with them on how they wanna deal with their parking lot. We will take care of replacing the sidewalk, because it's the main sidewalk right in town, to make it, our, most of our town. And we will take care of it for there to the street. And what they do on the parking lot side is truly up to them. Sam will talk to them, work with them on their schedule and everything. It's truly a matter. So, that's the other picture.
Yeah, we've done that on last month.
Just so you're aware.
Which one is that?
Right in front of physical therapy, the old bank there.
Going back into town, heading south? From physical therapy to south?
Right on 88.
Between doctors, between the doctor and the streetscape project, the dentist's office
Double, yeah.
in the streetscape, right where it starts out, right there.
Right on the side of 88.
You know, when I take my walks, I go up that sidewalk, and Ralph Hines parks right on that sidewalk all the time. And you can't, you have to go out in the street to get by his trucks. Now, is that allowed?
Scott's right here in the roof.
And those trucks are heavy, and he's driving over them. I mean, I'm not gonna destroy the sidewalk, I guess, but, you know, they are blocking the sidewalk every day. Partially or fully.
Two-part question. Can you drive over them? Yes. Can you park down on top of them? No.
Yeah. Well, there, it's obvious he's doing it all the time.
Who, who regulate, who, who enforces the village ordinance laws?
Should be a ticket.
It's blatant, it's right there every day, everybody sees it. So, it's not like a private, private driveway for him.
Scott will, I'm sure he will.
Could I ask, why is that sidewalk being replaced at the village cost and other sidewalks are not?
Because the village agreed that when we, we would spend our money on the sidewalks in the downtown area, the major sidewalks leading to the schools, leading to the parks, and that truly is right near the downtown area. That, I mean, that truly is intentional. Hopefully, as we work for a better sidewalk program, the limited money we do have can be used to keep the sidewalks that we have in high traffic areas in better shape. Because we have some more we know will need addressed in the downtown area in the next year or so. We're trying to spend money at best on sidewalks.
I guess, how do you determine who has to pay and who doesn't? I think you just said that you would be doing the repair on that sidewalk at the village's expense. Was that determined what is commercial or... I'm sorry, I can't read because I was still speaking.
We're gonna maintain the drive, the sidewalks within the downtown development area, sidewalks leading to the school, and the sidewalks leading to the parks. Is our only plan at this point right now.
Do you know when you all start addressing the, the next part of the plan? Do you have any idea?
We have the next budget.
Okay.
It truly is a budget I believe is. Any old business that I don't know of? Any public comments? We'll open it back up.
I'd like to know who enforces the village laws, the village rules. Who is, who enforces them?
Scott Barrett, I presume.
But he doesn't enforce them. I have pictures of people parked on the wrong side of the road, facing the wrong way, parking at the corner store right on the road, because it's a convenient place to park. I guess you ain't got to walk that far. I'd like to know who enforces them. Just like with Ralph Hines parking on the sidewalk, you guys just blew that question right off. Blew it right off.
You did.
You just said it was illegal for him to park on the sidewalk, but you had your parks on the sidewalk.
He said Scott can handle it.
Any other public comment?
Did you get to the, my question about the agenda being online?
That was my fault.
Oh, so you're gonna, that's gonna be...
I'll take responsibility.
Okay.
And then it's checked every day, because I've been blocked from it, because I was on it four days in a row, and you took my comment off. Four days in a row, you removed my comment.
Take two of them. Tell Rachel that we need to send it to Cory to get it on there. So, we're gonna start taking care of some of those things within the office with the additional time. So, that's my fault, so.
Yeah. Your exact words in response to a public question as to why the property at 8096 West State Street couldn't go to public sale with the house on it, where that would be illegal. Repeatedly over the last few months, you have claimed that you had to burn the house down or else you couldn't buy it. And then at the special meeting, you wouldn't even answer questions of how or why it suddenly became a legal thing to do, and not only legal, but the only fair thing to do. So, my question is, will you at least consider the possibility of selling the house at public auction now that it's been determined to be a legal thing for you to do? And also, I'd like to add that traditionally, it is abandoned or vacated property that's offered to adjoining property owners first, not something that you just deliberately went out and purchased just a couple months ago.
I think the council decided to do adjoining property owners, correct? As a fair way, and the village didn't deliberately away the property. The property was offered to the village on a tax-reverse sale. Village is not well looking to buy property and stuff.
That doesn't answer my question. Will you at least consider now that it's been determined that you can legally sell it at public auction? Can I finish, please?
I've answered this question so many times.
You interrupted me repeatedly. I would really like to just finish the sentence. Thanks. I'm just asking if you would consider, now that it has been determined to be legal as of July 18, to maybe offer it to the public at auction now, as should have taken place in the first place. I'm asking if you'll think about it.
I won't. The council's made a decision, it's been done, we've done nothing illegal. It's not, nothing, so. Remind me, they're doing exactly what's right. If the council disagrees, but we went through this at a special meeting and agreed to offer to adjoining property owners first, neither one shows an interest, we'll readdress it. Any other public comments?
Yeah, I would disagree with any comments. I've heard about Scott Barrett and not doing his job. I think he does his job very well, and if you have a disagreement, you should handle it private.
I tried, I didn't want to put out there.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Close public comment. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Chapman, supported by Bobby, all in favor. Leading in here. Thank you.